Good morning, everyone. It's 9:11. We'll start the November 15th Crow Wing County Committee of the Whole Meeting. First up is Karen Terry.
Good morning, everyone. It's 9:11. We'll start the-
Good morning.
Good morning.
Karen Terry, Community Services.
Christina Kadolph. I'm the supervisor to the support team.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. County Board. On June 6th, you might remember, I sent you an email describing issues we were having with our fingerprinting service. Basically, we provide an in-depth fingerprinting service for people in the county and surrounding areas. Fingerprinting is required by DHS, Department of Human Services, for persons providing service through the programs that they provide. So, for example, fingerprinting must be completed on employees of child placement facilities, centers and home-based daycares, schools, places that take care of our elderly, et cetera. Initially, we believed there would be a limited number of folks that we would need to print. However, we found that the work has increased exponentially, and we're not able to keep up with the current pace. Other counties surrounding us that do this service include Aiken, Cass Lake, and Little Falls in Morrison County currently. So, I sent the June 6th email and let you know that we would be having a discussion with the vendor, Idemia, who DHS contracts with. And during that discussion, we had talked about potential options that could help us provide this service. We were able to reduce our hours as a part of that discussion. We increased our reimbursement rate to $4 per print, and we thought these changes would help the issues that we were facing. However, on October 10th, I sent you another email regarding fingerprinting, and we decided it was time to bring this issue in front of you to have a discussion, and you provide us direction on the course that we should take related to our fingerprinting services. So Christina will broadly outline some issues that we are currently having. She supervises the team that provides this service internally.
So first, we asked the vendor, Idemia, to find someone else in the community to provide this service. We have given them over five months to find a replacement, and thus, they have not come up with any plan. KT has asked them if they would provide the service if we leased our space. They said that this was not an option. Second, we have had multiple issues with the equipment they have provided us to work with. As a matter of fact, we have received at least five replacement fingerprinting tablets, as the ones we have had were not working. Third, we are struggling to have adequate support from them from our technology issues. The vendor has actually hung up on my staff and our IT staff trying to get the fingerprinting tablet to work properly. Fourth, we are still looking at how to adequately staff this service as it is time-consuming, especially with the technology issues. Fifth, because of the issues, customers have had to reschedule at least three times to get fingerprinted. When the machine isn't working, the customers could be waiting for hours at a time as their appointments are backed up. Because we do not hold the appointments, we rely on the vendor to connect with the customers to let them know. This does not always work smoothly. It also leads the customers to believe we are not providing quality service when the issue falls with the vendor. We continue to have to roll each finger three times and have to write a comment on each print roll that we do best capture. This takes more than the 10 minutes that the client is scheduled, which makes us run behind. Typically, it takes 20 minutes or longer per fingerprinting client. They advertise it would be five minutes per person. This is not the case. There are many days we are running an hour behind due to the technology issues. Finally, we have tried to recruit others to provide this service in our community with no luck. Those who need this service will need to go to Aiken or St. Cloud. I believe if we close our site, Morrison County will close theirs as well.
So we took a look at the net cost for the county, and, excuse me, while we do receive $4 per print reimbursement, the levy cost over the last 10 months has been about $12,000. So it's not a huge amount of money, but yet it's significant enough that we're looking for direction on if this is a service that we should continue to provide. We have a lot of data for you guys if we want us to dig in, including the number of fingerprints provided each month, the amount of time we spend on calls with the vendor, a whole lot of information if you'd like us to delve deeper to make a decision today. This is more of a high-level overview, and we're looking for your direction.
Mr. Chair, if I might, a couple of questions. First of all, this is a vendor that's contracted with the state of Minnesota, correct?
Correct.
Have you made that, these issues, known to the state of Minnesota? Because they review those contracts periodically and address the deficiencies in whether they're going to continue working with that vendor.
So we have, Commissioner, we've connected with the head of this, of the agency at DHS that handles this, a number of times, and we were directed to utilize a form when we have issues. So we complete the form and send that in. Do you know how many forms?
They started back in September, this new form, and so I think we've done six of them. I did not go back to the past to report, which I can, but they are well-known of the issues.
Having worked in the state system, MMB, Minnesota Management and Budget, are the ones who go out and do these contracts. We should be contacting them directly with our concerns. Contacting DHS is like going to a third person, and they'll give you that form. It won't carry the same impact as it would if you were going to MMB and discussing it with the individual that goes out with the RFPs or whatever they're doing to find these vendors. That would be important. That'd be the first thing. The second thing is, if we don't provide this service, what would be the closest facility to provide that service?
Currently, it will be Aiken or St. Cloud if Little Falls closes their facility. Just so you know, we are working to meet with CLC. They have said they may be interested in providing this service because their curriculum and part of their programs are licensing or getting people approved for internships and that type of thing. We've scheduled two meetings thus far, and they've had to cancel both. So we're hoping first part of December, we can have a discussion with them to see if they would be interested. We have a 90-day out clause for our contract, so that'll give us some overlap if you do approve us to get out of the service. So potentially, there might not be a lapse in service if we're able to coordinate with CLC and they want to bring it to them.
If we were to continue this service, given what you're talking about, the length of time because of the bad machines, whatever, the technology issues, what would be the cost that, you're currently charging $4 per fingerprint, what would you have to charge to cover that $12,000 deficit?
That's a very good question. This is about half, the $12,000 is about half of an FTE. So there are two things. We cannot charge higher than, we do not charge anything for the fingerprinting service. The vendor does. And then they provide us reimbursement of the $4 per print. They will not go higher on that reimbursement unless we go back to full-time Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, providing fingerprints. We're unable to staff that at that amount because of the technology issues, the fact that we fall behind with the problems with the equipment, all of that. So we can't increase the reimbursement rate. We can't charge a fee. If we were to stay in this work, we would potentially look for a .5 position to help with this work. The $12,000 reimbursement would be about half of an FTE to provide the work. That doesn't mean that the service will be improved, however, because we're still dealing with the vendor. Does that make sense?
Yep. But if you were to go full-time, would there be a cap on what the reimbursement rate would be?
I believe the highest the reimbursement rate will go would be $5, which is a dollar more than what we're currently reimbursed. But I have not talked with Idemia about a cap. They want to make money, too. So I doubt they would go much higher than $5.
So to make sure that these facilities have the staff, and they have to have the fingerprint in order to get hired, I think it's important that we look at this issue as a local issue, but also, we need to address with MMB the issues that we have, both in terms of the reimbursement and the locale and how we're being able to provide that service, which to me would not be a full-time situation, but a part-time situation. And that $4 reimbursement, to me, is inadequate for the service we're providing. So we need to find out where that dollar amount would lie if we were doing our part-time, and what, you know, what we need to have to cover that $12,000. And I think that's only temporary, because with inflation, we know that's going to go up. So it has to be tied to something that addresses the real ongoing costs with this particular service.
And that's where it gets a little tricky, too, Commissioner, is that we have set hours, but the fingerprinting process takes so darn long that we go way across, further than the hours that we're supposed to provide the service, right? So that takes a staff person out of the rotation to get the work to serve the customers who are coming in for other tasks or duties. So it's hard to calculate what the true cost is, but as close as we can get, it's about $12,000 over the last 10 months.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, when, when did you start doing this, and did the county board approve you to do this? Because you, if not, you've, you've started a project that's actually costing the taxpayers money. And, you know, Commissioner Franzen and I have always been, we shouldn't be doing things that we're not mandated to do. You know that, because you've been here long enough. We've tried to get rid of things that, that were not mandated to do. So when did the county board approve this?
I don't believe I brought it to the county board. We started this four years ago or so. Our local fingerprint provider was the other criminal background check agency in the county in Minnesota. Anyway, they were getting out of the business, and there was no one to take on the work. We talked with the jail because they provide a type of fingerprinting, but it's different than the fingerprinting that we provide. We talked with other vendors across the county in terms of if they would be interested in taking on this work, and we couldn't find anyone. So at the time, it was a different vendor, and the amount of folks that we had to fingerprint was much smaller. So it was, it wasn't as big of an issue for us to do the fingerprinting for the community at the time. Two years ago or so, the vendor that DHS was working with got out of the business, and they contracted with Idemia. Again, we tried to find another provider in the community to provide this service, and we came up empty-handed. And so we're kind of the fallback for the county. If no one else in the county is going to provide the service, then we look to see how we could potentially accommodate. And early on, several years ago, we were able to accommodate it. And now, with the changes and the issues with technology, we have not been able to accommodate it.
I can just tell you, give me my answer right now, and it's no. I don't support this. $12,000, you said is not a lot of money, but that's a lot of money to me. And it's a lot of money to Grandma Johnson, who is paying her taxes, or Grandma Franzen, or Rosemary's mother, who's 99 years old. It's a lot of money. So I, I'm not, I'm not going to support this. I don't, I don't think we should continue to do it. I don't think we should run after everything and try to be everything to everybody. If somebody's going to drive to St. Cloud or Aiken, I'm sorry, but, you know, I just don't think we can be everything to everybody. We need to stop doing that.
And I appreciate that. I, too, agree that $12,000 is a lot of money. Don't get me wrong. In the grand scheme of things, with our $30 million budget, it seems like a small amount, but I understand. It's a, it's a big chunk of change. The only other thing that I would throw in is that our staff are also required to have this fingerprinting service done. And so we have embarked on a project where we're trying to get all of our staff fingerprinted under this new rule for DHS. And then we will be looking at, how do we ensure staff that are coming onboard are fingerprinted also? So that was another reason for us getting into this work, is because we have, we have to do it for our staff. So we will be wrapping up that project, do you know?
December 9th.
Oh, excellent. December 9th, in terms of all of our staff being-
So if somebody new is coming in, and they know they're going to be an employee here at Crow Wing County, I would assume there's several requirements that we, and one of the requirements that we would have is that they have the fingerprinting done.
Correct.
So that's on them to get that done?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I might, and I'd like to just add to my discussion and my position, is that these are small businesses, a lot of these, that are looking for employees. And sometimes, they're not high, highly-paid individuals to travel 60 miles or more to be fingerprinted, just to find out if they're eligible or not, I think puts a burden on them, and it shows that we're not supporting these local businesses. We just spent millions of dollars in CARE Act dollars and ARPA dollars to support our local businesses, and these people are taking care of the most vulnerable people in our community. And so therefore, I do support this, and I think that that's an important point to make, is that we're supporting these businesses. We're supporting the people that need to have the care that they're currently receiving. So I do think it's an important issue for us to maintain at the county level. Until we can work with MMB and get this vendor issue straightened out in their technology, that's foolish, but that's another issue to deal with. So, thank you.
So these are one-time and dumb-type things, or do you have to do it annually?
Every five years.
Every five years?
Yeah.
Okay. And you said that the $4 is set, but can there be an additional county fee? Or is that in statute, not allowed?
I believe it's part of the contract that we're not able to charge additional fees. The contract DHS has with Idemia. And then we contract then with Idemia, who contracts with DHS.
So, Mr. Chair, does the state legislature set that, or does the vendor set that? Or does DHS set that?
That's a great question. I am not sure. Because we've worked with the vendor to, we were earning $3 per print. When we said that we were going to potentially get out of the business, they went to $4 per print. And so I think it's probably Idemia that controls that amount, because they're the ones we were negotiating with, but I can't say for certain.
So it's not just technology. It might be their fee schedule that is an issue, too. So that would be another issue to raise with MMB, and what the costs are to the county when we can't find, when we have issues with that one vendor.
The unfortunate part is, a lot of the issues are technology-driven. I did walk over and was able to witness one, and I don't know how many times they had to reset the pad to get a good print in it, kicked a bunch out, and it's just a cumbersome thing, but that's because the technology's more of an issue than, you know, I don't know what that would reduce to. If, if you could get in five minutes and get it in and out, we wouldn't be facing these extra costs, but, and I, too, I just hate to, to tell people they've got, and who knows what, if Aiken's going to continue doing it, or St. Cloud, if they're struggling with the same issues. I'm assuming they are. Have we talked to our neighboring counties?
Yep. So it's, it's interesting, and I thought if we do continue to provide this service, I may have Morrison County come up. They have not had the same technology issues that we've had. So maybe they could have someone come up and help just see what we're doing. It's been tricky, though, because it's actually been the laptops that are there, or the modem. We have to have special equipment from the vendor. We can't just have one of our modems or computers. So it has actually been the technology, but maybe there's something we can learn to better practice from other counties.
What's driving Morrison County to get out of it, then?
That's a good question. Part of it would be, if we were out of the service, then our folks would go to Morrison County, and they are not able to-
Be flooded with-
Yeah, take over that work, too. So, and the reimbursement rate, quite frankly, is quite low, and so they're not making any money yet doing this either.
Mr. Chair?
Do we need to use the DHS vendor, or can we go around their contract and hire our own and set our own rates?
We cannot do that. We have to go with the DHS vendor, because it's for licensing for DHS programs. We're locked in.
So where are we at, then?
This would be such a simple issue.
Yeah.
If it weren't for the fact that every nursing home employee, every hospital employee, every school district employee, PCAs, daycares, county employees, this would be a really simple issue if it were not for the fact that there are so many folks in our community that need to get the service in order to be employed. And we will erect a barrier to that employment if we are going to force them to go to St. Cloud. And I doubt Aiken will stay in the business if we send our business that way. I do think you've got to rattle the state tree here, that there needs to be better reimbursement for this, or we need alternatives, so that this isn't the only game in town. And so I do think we need to rattle the state's cage to see if we can't improve the situation. That's what I would suggest in the short term, is see if we can't move this thing back to break even. It is a good likelihood we will not be able to. And then, you may be forced with that choice. Are we going to send all of those employees 60 miles to get fingerprinted? And how does that impact their ability to recruit and retain quality employees? Those settings are already, especially nursing homes, PCAs, homecares, they're already challenged to find employees. That's the issue, is it's not about us, and it's not about whether or not we're going to travel 60 miles. It's about whether all of those folks in our community are going to have to travel 60 miles, and whether it's worth 12 grand to all of us in order to avoid them having to do that. I don't know the answer to that, but that is the dilemma that you have here. It's really not about us. It's about them. We're going to try to rattle the cage, and we're going to try to rattle the state's cage, and I'll try to help you to do that. We will try that as an intervention. If that doesn't work, we will be back.
On those contracts with MMB, there is a purchaser's name, signature on there. That would be the person to start with. And then, of course, they have somebody above them. And I would not stop until I got to the top of MMB if I had to.
And it may also be something that you wish to put on to MICA's radar, as well as AMC's radar. We have the annual conference coming up for AMC at the first week in December. I'm not sure when the next MICA board meeting is, but you might also bring it up there.
Oh, next board meeting will be in December, but I think December 9th.
My guess is, this isn't an issue for just us. I would bet you that there are many counties in greater Minnesota suffering the same fate. If the vendor is not reliable to us, the likelihood is, they're not reliable to others as well.
Can I ask another question? So, Mr. Hool, so I'm guessing that the legislature, this is some legislation that passed that, that is requiring, and I'm assuming there's a whole list of people that are required to have this. So what is, what if somebody bucks that and says, no, we're not going to do that? Then, then what happens?
They don't get employed. The nursing home can't get reimbursement if they don't follow these rules. And for a nursing home, public reimbursement for care, it is their bread and butter.
Yeah.
The rates that can be charged are set by the state of Minnesota, based on the reimbursement rates. And since that mix of clients in a nursing home is so heavily public pay, essentially, the state sets the rate for both nursing home care, as well as the wages that are paid to the employees.
So I'm assuming, I know the purpose of this is just to check if there's any bad guys or bad gals that are, we don't want those working with elderly and-
If you have a history of assault, for instance, it might not be a great idea to put somebody in a closed setting with a vulnerable adult.
Did you say how many we average per month, or is that, I'm sure that varies, but how many of these?
I think it's on here.
Is that per week?
No, this is month.
So around, anywhere from 300, looks like 274 one month, 282, 185. The other interesting thing is, is that as a part of the contract, we're required to also provide fingerprinting services for those individuals who are from Texas. Why Texas? I do not know. I think it has to do with the vendor and something with employment. And so we also have a small number of individuals that we provide this service for from Texas. Now, there's only been eight total since January, but just to be transparent, we do provide this service as well for some-
We'll have to dive into that as well.
That might be another issue to address with MMB, why we're doing another state's business.
Can I ask another question? So what about people that are getting services from the county, whatever it would be? Are they all required to be fingerprinted?
No, not through the same service.
The providers generally are, not the client.
Correct.
Not the client.
Correct.
We do do background testing, testing, checks. Commissioner, if we hear of, let's say, a customer has felony conviction for fraud, they're not eligible for some of the programs, and so we do track and, and monitor that, but they don't have to go through the fingerprinting process to be on public programs?
They're likely to be back, but we're going to try to rattle the state's cage.
Okay. Right now, that's the option.
We will go forth and rattle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go forth and rattle.
All right. Next on our agenda is short-term rental. Tim, can you queue us up here?
I'll try to tee the issue up for everybody today, and then we want to hear from you. That's the main point of today. Short-term rentals are rental units that are in our community that are rented for less than 30 days. That's generally how we define it, so we're not talking about hotels, we're not talking about resorts. We're talking about generally individual residential units that are rented out on a short-term basis for less than 30 days. Typically, you might hear those referred to as VRBOs or something of that sort. That's what we're basically talking about. We call them short-term rentals. And about four years ago, I think, we were asked by the mayor of, I think it was Cross Lake, wasn't it?
Well-
Mayor Lillahy, Breezy Point, Breezy Point. Mayor Lillahy in Breezy Point asked us to get together, and we met up in Pequot Lakes. I think some of you were there. And we talked about the issues of short-term rentals. And at that point in time, the townships and the cities that were present said, "We think the county should do it, and we think that the county should do it county-wide." In order for us to do something county-wide, we have two different authorities we can draw from. We can draw from our planning and zoning authority. That authority only applies outside of cities, because they have their own planning and zoning authority, or a township that has chosen to do its own zoning. We have two of them in Crow Wing County that have chosen to do their own zoning. So our zoning authority applies wherever those don't. Because we were asked to do it county-wide, we used our public health authority to do a health ordinance. It accomplishes a lot of the same things, it's just drawing from different authority that is given to us by the state of Minnesota. So we used our public health authority, which meant it applies everywhere in the county equally. We've been doing it now for a number of years and learning some things along the way, and I think you guys have been watching what we're doing and learning some things along the way. And so now, we've started to get some feedback from some of the cities that they would prefer to have the administration of short-term rentals done differently than what we can do. The issue for us is, let's say, the city of Niswa has a set of zoning standards that are different from the cities of Breezy Point, that are different from the cities of Brainerd and Baxter and Cross Lake, and for us to try to administer, then, all of the different zoning components of all of the different units of government that could exercise authority, it becomes an impossible task for us administratively. We will make errors, we will not do it well, you're going to hear about it, and so we don't think that's a good course of action for us. So we're here today because we wanted to get some feedback from you guys to follow-up to that four-year-old meeting. What do you think we should do now? Should we get out of the short-term rental business? That's one option. Just repeal the ordinance? We don't regulate. We could repeal the existing public health ordinance and replace it with the same or similar provisions in our land use ordinance, in which case, all cities and the two townships would be carved out, and our ordinance would not apply there. That would allow those cities or townships to regulate it however they wish. We could keep our public health ordinance in place. You can continue to regulate if you're in the city- That would allow those cities or townships to regulate it however they wish. We could keep our public health ordinance in place. You can continue to regulate if you're in the cities or those two townships. You could continue to have additional regulations and an additional license. I think the issue there is explaining to the public why they've got to go to two jurisdictions to get a license to do the same thing. So we have options here, and we're really curious, I think, to see, you know, we've been doing it a while. What feedback do you have for us about what worked well, what didn't work well? What do you think we ought to do? Should we use our land use authority and get out of the cities and the two townships? Or should we continue to use our public health authority and regulate it countywide? Or should we get out of the business altogether? So, Mr. Chair, I think that's the background of why we're here today. I would suggest that we open it up and take public comment.
Yep. So at this time, if, just identify the city or township you're representing and come forward and state your concerns.
My name is David Gray. I represent Deerwood Township Board of Supervisors. We have discussed this on the last two meetings, and the points I'm going to make to you are the unanimous opinion of the Board of Supervisors. Our first concern is septic and environmental conditions. The fact is that even if we put a set number of beds that can be occupied on a given site, the number of people who show up during the day at those sites often vastly exceeds whatever restriction there is. And while they're there, they're going to use facilities. Now, this is not as much an issue in towns, however, the area where your zoning authority applies in most of the townships, where most of the lakeshore property is, that can be a big issue. Second with that is the fact that if you are regulating, you must have good enforcement mechanisms. That means personnel, that means expending money, which is not currently being expended, because I think, I listened to the testimony at the last meeting, and I think it's safe to say that enforcement right now is not entirely satisfactory to the residents of Crow Wing County. One way that could be addressed would be by taxing these vacation rentals in order to support the regulatory regime of regulating them, if that is the way that the county chooses to go. Another point I would like to make is that when this is done in a residential zoning area, this is unfair competition for local businesses. Deerwood Motel, Rutgers, places like that, they have specific requirements that they need to meet, that these businesses, which are direct competition with them, do not have to meet. That is not fair free-market practice. Another point I think that often is missed in this is the serious impact on local housing costs. For young families trying to start out and buy their first home, prices in the local market, at least on the Cayuna range, have gone up substantially, and it's due predominantly to the investment in these vacation rentals, and taking properties off the entry-level low-end part of the housing market and turning them into vacation rentals. That's a societal cost which can't be measured just in dollars and cents, and should weigh on your decision. The final point we would like to make is simply, now this is applicable to the places that are not self-zoning, as the administrator was pointing out, but the fact is, if a place is zoned rural residential or residential zone, that should not have commercial enterprises taking place in it. There is, it is not consistent with the practice of zoning. Now, if one wishes to be a pure libertarian on the issue, one should simply do away with zoning. But if you're going to have zoning in a zoned residential, then a commercial enterprise in that, particularly one that has substantial impact on the residences around that property, which this so often does, and cannot purely be measured in the reports that are recorded by the sheriff's office and so on, then that's a big factor. And what are we having zoning for if you can simply disregard it? And any regulatory regime is essentially blessing that activity. Thank you for listening. That was Deerwood Township's take on the issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Dave Peterson. I'm representing Riverton. Ron Martin is also here, one of the council members. Basically, Riverton would just like to be able to opt out and establish their own rules of operation on short-term issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. John O'Jay with Mission Township. Probably either way, we're a township that will live by what you decide, so. First of all, I think we accept the reality that short-term rentals are likely going to grow, given the area, given what's happening, so we ought to accept that reality. Second of all, we always get to the issue of property rights. Do I have a right to do something versus the impact on other people's rights? And this happens to be an issue that you're going to be forced to balance that. It's not an absolute, right? So our position would be that people have a right to do this activity, but they don't have to, they don't have the right to have that activity infringe on others. And we have many cases where that starts to happen. And particularly, the concerns were expressed about septics and other things go beyond just that property. So we're not opposed to short-term rentals. In fact, we discussed it at our last board meeting. We probably wouldn't be a township that would say, we want to ban them. We would probably leave that to the county to issue them. But we do need to respect that there's probably good operators, and there's not-so-good operators. So that's kind of the role, I think, of government, to help us in these situations in terms of not-so-good operators. I think that we would favor leaving it as is, as a public health ordinance, think that's the most effective. But if you go to a land use ordinance, let's make sure it has enough teeth that we can accomplish the dealing with the not-so-great operators. And I think the issue about enforcement was a valid one in terms of going forward. So that's our view from Mission Township.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I do have some written ones, too, as the folks may wish to collect their thoughts. We have received correspondence from Pat Vannelli, Ross Lake Township Board, met on November 7th. The board supports number three. I think that's a reference to my original letter, which would be, continue with the current STR ordinance that applies countywide, or some variation thereof. The board supports the continued regulations by Crow Wing County with penalties established. We would suggest a pet leash policy and garbage containers enforced. Thank you, Pat Vannelli, Clerk, Ross Lake Township.
Yep.
I've got more, but...
Hi, thank you. And thanks for having this meeting. My name is Dave Johnson. I'm from Emily. I am on the Planning and Zoning Committee, but not necessarily representing planning and zoning your city family. We have, we have our own ordinance regarding this. We've worked at it, we've gone through a lot of the issues that have been brought up through the years. And some of the ways that we've, that we've come up with, with regulating some of this is, one of the things is we have, they have to be permitted. So if you're going to do a rental, you have to come in, you have to get a permit. You're only allowed to rent for a certain amount of time in each calendar year. So that kind of takes it away out of the realm of just being a completely commercial enterprise. So we're not having just the straight commercial stuff in that residential area. What accommodates more, I think, by doing it this way, is you have people that are trying to afford lake property, and they work hard to be able to do that. I know I've done that at, I've got my third property, third lake property. We always rented it out during the summer months. It was typically a three-month rental to the same people, and they took pretty good care of it. We screened them pretty well before they came in. But I think you're seeing a difference between people that do that, they're willing to make that kind of sacrifice in order to be able to afford property, and those just coming out and doing a commercial rental. You were talking about VRBO. If you advertise, that was one of the triggers for us. If you're advertising on VRBO or a similar site, you're probably commercial. But completely putting that out of the, out of the realm of where people can do the rental, I think is doing a disservice to them. As far as the, as the different methods that you'd cited, I like the second one. Let's just let the, I mean, City of Emily, we have our own ordinance. Let's just let us continue to do that without anything else being involved with it. And it seems to be working okay.
So the second one is, leave it as is, under the public health? Is that what you're...
No.
No.
Let the, let the, let the municipalities, like the City of Emily, we've got our own, let us do that.
Okay.
If you get into that, the public health thing, and I know it's talked about Rutgers, et cetera. So they have to, an individual, say it's this couple, and they have to rent it out for three months or so. And they're not going to get the kind of revenue that Rutgers is going to get. So when they're spending the money to be able to fulfill all the health requirements and everything, they've got three months to spread it over. Rutgers has got 12. So it's putting them at a disadvantage for that. I understand where those, the commercial properties are having a little issue, but I really don't know that those little shorter-term rentals, we've got it set up where it's only X amount in a year. I don't think that's a problem there. But it's the ones that are going with the VRBOs, and they're going with a 12-month commercial rental. I think that's where the problem is. And that's just, that's my personal thoughts on this, as one who has done that in the past. We've had, we had to do that because, you know, we had to find a way to be able to afford it, so we gave up the good summer months, and we were never there at that time. But we'd come back in the spring and fall and work on the place. But it was a way to afford it.
Sure.
And I'd hate to see us lose that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I do have more that I can read. I would also suggest there are folks online that I suspect may wish to comment, so as you wish.
Yep, I see we've got a couple hands up there. So why don't we shift to the online folks? There we go.
Giles Radke with Pelican Township has his hand up, I see.
Is he on mute?
He must be muted.
You're going to have to call them out, Mr. Chair, because they don't know which one, Keith.
Bob Stanser.
Yeah, Bob Stanser with the City of 50 Lakes. We, we like option three, I guess, for the county to continue to manage the short-term rentals with the suggested changes that have been talked about in the information that was handed out. We don't, we have a planning and zoning group, we have city council, but we don't really have a way to enforce. And so we think through the, through the Health Department, the way the county's got it set up works best for 50 Lakes.
Mr. Stanser, Mr. Chair, may I? Mr. Stanser, one of the things that I heard suggested was whether or not the county could do this by contract with a municipality as a way for us to not go into municipalities that don't want us, but we also recognize that there are smaller municipalities like 50 Lakes that may prefer that. Would a contract arrangement with the county where you would adopt the same zoning ordinance language as the county, would that also work for 50 Lakes where we wouldn't have to go to, say, Breezy Point, that may prefer to do it themselves, but we could still offer to do it in small municipalities under contract, as long as it's the exact same ordinance? Would that work for you guys?
Um, I, yeah, I guess I would think that would work.
We do that now for Wetland Conservation Act. We contract with some of you to do, some of the cities to do Wetland Conservation Act administration. We also were up in Cross Lake doing zoning administration for quite a while, under contract. And so we do have examples where we have done things for cities under contract, but they have to have the exact same ordinance. And over the course of time, I think that's what happened in Cross Lake, was the desires of the city to have separation of their own requirements got to the point where it was time for them to do it themselves again, and I, I hope, I trust, it's working well for you guys. If, if that would work, that is another option for smaller cities to opt in, but not force larger cities that may not wish to be in to be in, or, for all I care, Brainerd doesn't have that many short-term rentals, and so maybe a larger city like Brainerd wants us to do it for them, because they don't have very many. That's another option.
Anything else?
I've got three of those on there. Go to Mr. Radke. Giles Radke.
Giles, are you still on? I don't...
Mr. Radke, if you're speaking, we can't hear you, and you'll have to make sure that your mic is turned on.
There you go.
He put his hand down.
He put his hand down. Is there anybody else online that wishes to speak? I'm taking that as a no. We have someone here who wishes to.
Hi, my name is Jody Shrupp, and I represent 50 Lakes. I have been with all of the meetings that you have had. I've been a council member for 12 years now. I just want to remind everybody that the reason I believe that you're here is because of the complaints. And there's a lot of them out there that are not complained about. I mean, we have a few in 50 Lakes, and we've had some complaints just this last year of two right next door to each other, that were violating most of your rules. The rest of them, in the last 12 years, we haven't really heard about, because no one minds them there, they're respectful, it's like somebody owns it. They come up, they stay, they respect the area, they respect the lakes. And I just don't want whatever we decide here today to, to stop that, because I believe that the people have the right to do with their property if it's done well. The new option that was just suggested, I too think that would be a great idea, because we don't have the, the man, the manpower to police this. So, yeah, I do agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Radke said his microphone is not working, but if the ordinance is changed, our support would be to number two, repealing the STR from public health and moving it to P and Z.
Okay.
And that's Pelican Township.
Yeah, Giles, can you guys hear me now?
Oh, yep.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you for reading that I had to call in, but just, just a comment, a lot of the comments are negative, but I'd say most, most VRBO houses and VRBO guests are typically, you know, typically don't hear the good, the good things, so I'd take that into consideration when making any decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else out there?
Mr. Chair, we also have two other. Did you want to read those, Tim?
Oh, the letters, yeah. Yes.
Could I just say something before?
Sure, yep.
So the last lady that just spoke, you know, she talked about property rights, and I think, I think we've got to keep that in mind, you know? I mean, the question is, is you buy your property, you do have rights on your own property, you know, within reason. If we didn't have a, a planning and zoning, we, you know, somebody's going to start a junkyard or whatever have you, obviously I see the reasoning for that. But to me, it's kind of a, it's a delicate balance of, so we're not going too far to take away somebody's rights. Like the one gentleman said, I do have a neighbor a couple doors down from me, and he inherited a small cabin on Lower South Long from his dad, not a wealthy guy. They would rent it out a couple of months, just to help to pay, so he could hang on to that property. And I would remind everybody that Crow Wing County does not have a lot of industry here, and our lifeblood is the people that come here and stay here. And when the resorts are full, and the hotels are full, people stay in these vacation rentals. And some people don't want to go to the resorts, and they don't want to go to the hotels, they want to have a vacation rental and bring their family there, their kids, and they want to spend a week there. They probably can't afford to have a lake place, but this is the only way that they can enjoy lakes. And so I just, I just want to caution everybody that we don't get too carried away in trying to squeeze everybody, because we've already got ours. I don't want anybody else coming here. I can remember 20 years ago, when I was in the legislature, Crosby was, there wasn't much going on in Crosby, and I helped to get some money to get the Cayuna... there wasn't much going on in Crosby, and I helped to get some money to get the Cayuna rec area started. And you go to Crosby now, you talk to people, it's a destination. They come here to go to these little antique shops, they come here for that mountain biking trail. They're bringing their money, they're spending their money here. They're employing the people that live here. So I just caution that we just don't get too carried away and and take away people's rights that have, that have the right to do within reason on the property that they've paid for. So anyway, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the city of Cayuna sent us a letter. They said that they have, the city of Cayuna previously requested the county not issue short-term rental licenses in Cayuna zoning districts where short-term rentals are not an allowed use. If the county cannot agree to this change, the city then requests the current existing ordinance using the county's public health authority be repealed and move the existing regulations into the county zoning ordinance. We also have received correspondence from Ideal Township, and it is supporting much the same thing. The resolution, be it resolved, the town board supports incorporating the short-term rental regulations with the county's zoning ordinance. Mr. Chair, that's all the correspondence we've received, in case anybody else has feedback for us.
Good morning, members of the board. I'm Jenny Max, I'm the city administrator for the city of Niswa. The city council did discuss this item at their council meeting in October and wanted to first express her thanks for the county initially taking on this issue a couple of years ago because we were seeing that it was a challenge across municipalities, local cities and townships, you know, throughout the county. So we thank you for that. In Niswa, we have been fortunate to not have many issues at all with our short-term rentals, and we know we have a fair number of them within our communities, so we are, we have been fortunate in that way, but that can certainly change, and we understand that and want to be sensitive to those communities who are having challenges with their short-term rentals and how to best regulate that. At this time, we appreciate the opportunity to be a part of the county ordinance. We would like to see that opportunity stay. Even though we are one of the larger cities within the county, we still recognize that there'd be a significant challenge for us to have the capacity to manage who's online, trying to rent their homes, how do you enforce that? Manage all of those steps that you're taking right now for septic compliance and things of that nature. And we know that that would be a significant challenge for us to stay on top of. So if there are secondary conversations that need to be had about the enforcement and how that's going for the county, I think that that's important as well. So that everybody feels that they're being supported and this is managed well, I think that that would be important. But for us, it's worked well. We would appreciate the opportunity to consider whether it's opting into a contract scenario, if that just allows for everybody to have the options that they need. Because certainly every community should have that opportunity to make their decisions. But we do appreciate that you've taken this on, and we hope to continue to partner with the county going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. David Chansky, the city administrator for Breezy Point. I think you already know where the city council for the city of Breezy Point stands, I'm not going to reiterate any of that. I just want to bring you up to speed of what the council has done in the last few months when it comes to short-term rentals. Effective January 1, 2023, the city has its own licensing ordinance going into effect. This will also simultaneously repeal all the city's current zoning regulations on short-term rentals. Our licensing ordinance is roughly very, very similar, it's off, based off of the county's ordinance. So it'll give us mostly on the same page, probably about 85%. We do have, we are a little more strict in certain areas when it comes to water quality testing, how we determine occupancy, and how we, off-street parking, we don't allow on-street parking. It's on, require a certain amount of off-street parking. And the other major change is we are capping the number of licenses the city will issue at 60. So with this change, if the county chooses to stay with its current ordinance, I think we'll be mostly in lockstep. Shouldn't have too many issues other than if, for example, the county were to license a property that maybe doesn't meet our more restrictive ordinance, or if we get to a point where we have issued our cap, our total of 60, and the county continues to issue licenses beyond that 60, then we would obviously have to take enforcement, action against those properties. But otherwise, that's where we are at today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. We'll bring it back for discussion.
Anyone else?
I don't see any online.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I do have one observation, and it was by the first gentleman, and I didn't catch your name, but what I appreciated was he brought up the fact about the purchasing of these homes, and I know there's a movement nationally for corporations that have been put together and they buy up these properties. And so they're taking that housing stock out of the stock that's in that community or in that county so that other people can purchase it, but they're, so you're competing against a corporation, you're not, when you're trying to purchase a piece of property, you're not always competing against John Doe or whoever might be the other person. And it's kind of an unfair playing field, and I know that that's a movement that's happening nationally. And I think that we have to be aware that that could happen. We have a very attractive area in Crowing County, and it could happen here where corporations start buying up a lot of these properties. And it's an unfair playing field for the average purchaser. And even to the gentleman who said that they buy a property, they rent it out so they can, can pay it off and own that piece of property. I appreciate that kind of approach to buying some of these lake shores, properties, I know they're very expensive. But it's even more of a problem when you're going up against a larger corporation to buy these properties. So I just thought it was interesting, and I want to thank you for bringing that point out. I think it's one that we haven't talked a lot about, and I think it's something that we need to take into consideration as we move forward.
Anybody else? I don't know, can we try to summarize what we heard today, or is it?
Well, we heard competing things, and I think this audience probably is astute about the fact that you receive competing feedback. You guys get this all the time, too. And so the only thing they can do with this is to try to sort through it and figure out what did they hear the most of. I'll tell you what I heard the most of. This is not speaking for any county board member, it is speaking only for myself. What I heard was that there is a need for flexibility with cities that might want us to help. And I think it, I also heard that there is more of a preference for us to use our zoning authority than our public health authority. I've heard that we have some issues with enforcement that we should be taking a closer look at. That's the overview of what I heard today, and if I missed something, now would be a good time to fill in that blank. Because we're just trying to do the right thing as best we can.
May I speak again?
Yep.
Dave Peterson, Riverton, whoops. Hopefully that won't move anymore. I'm sure that you're aware of this, but I just want to make, make the comment so that as far as the short-term rentals go, in Riverton, we haven't really had a problem, we're, we're kind of looking, we're doing a look at what, you know, what should Riverton do? So we're not, we haven't decided one way or another, you know, set anything in the stone. But one of the concerns that I have noticed is that just in the last year, two homes in Riverton have come up for sale. Both of them have been bought by someone who wants to do a short-term rental. Another gentleman wanted to build a place and have a short-term rental in there. Well, my concern, and I think the concern of our council folks also, is that every time a house is bought up and then a short-term rental is going to be put in there, that takes away a home in Riverton for a family to live there full-time. And I know it's easy to jump to conclusions sometimes that, well, every house that's going to come up for sale now, you know, if somebody wants to do a short-term rental. That's probably not true, but it's a concern that we have, that we, we need to have housing in our communities for people who are moving in to work in the hospitals, you know, in schools, and so on and so forth. So I think that it's very important that whatever happens in Riverton, that we have control over the matter. You know, like capping the number of short-term rentals, that type of thing. So, but I just wanted to bring that up, that there is a concern that short-term rentals are crowding out some of the opportunities for people to have full-time living places. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Will, where are we at?
As a realtor, one thing that I really appreciate is how you're trying to keep the uniqueness of each area. I appreciate that because Crowing Township is a whole lot different than Fifty Lakes, and it's not a one-size-fits-all. And I really appreciate that you guys are taking the time to see the uniqueness of each area. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns?
I'm still Dave Johnson from Emily. I guess, you know, this has all been really interesting, I'm really glad I came. But I think a couple of the things that we're doing right now is limiting the number of rentals and/or duration of rentals per year. A really good point was brought up regarding the corporate rental. But I think by keeping that down to, say, three per year or whatever, it's just not economically viable for people to pay that kind of money that they're probably paying, assuming they're going to be able to rent that out full-time through the year. So I think that would help, you know, if we're doing that kind of thing. And I still think it's a good idea for those communities that want to and feel that they can adequately enforce this. Well, as adequately as possible, I guess I should say that, because that is a difficulty. And with permits and everything, I mean, we're pretty conscientious about watching the number of people that are going to be there, how many bathrooms with the size of the septic are. I mean, we look real closely at that because we live there. And I think we can do it better because we live there than, than the county can, because they got to look, as Doug said, they're looking over the, over the whole thing. Where we can, we can fine-tune that a little bit more. And give us the opportunity to. I mean, if you want to, if you want to have the county do it, perfect, that's just fine. But allow us to have the ability to do our own. Thank you.
Before you run off, I, does Emily, do you have an ordinance on just rentals? I mean, you take like the city of Brainerd, they have a rental ordinance on, you know, month to month, or, and they have a fee, and somebody from the city comes out and inspects to see if they have a fire extinguisher, and if they have smoke detectors, or if there's paint peeling. Every year they do that here in the city of Brainerd, I know that for sure. Do you have that same thing?
I don't, I don't believe we do, but what do you, no.
No.
No, we don't. I mean, we've gone in locally and looked at some of the units that are going to be just general rental properties. Annual rentals, let's say. And just see if they're habitable. No specific training, we just go and try to do that, but that's about it.
I'm just wondering if you get somebody that's, you know, renting it out month to month, or have a one-year lease, and you have somebody that doesn't own the property there, but they're leasing it there, and that's a troublesome person there. You know, how do you, you know, then it's the same thing, you'd have to get a hold of the owner of that property and say.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah.
And basically, that would be handled under a nuisance ordinance.
Yeah.
So, okay, if you're the next-door neighbor of somebody, and they're just partying all the time and all weekend, then we turn that in and pursue that through the nuisance ordinance.
Correct.
And I mean, you can have the same thing happen if you have a house and it gets sold to a neighbor. I mean, and they could have how many relatives that went in on that, and they're there partying all weekend. It's just that now, you don't have them going home ever. They're always there. So it can kind of go both ways. But I think limiting the number of rentals that you can have makes a big difference. And I know when we did it, we didn't use VRBO, and I mean, everybody says VRBO, well, that, when the Speedy bought our, bought that, it really changed everything. So if you rent through there, you can't contact the renters that you're going to be renting to, or vice versa. You have to do everything online. When we did it, we called people, and I still do with another place I got, and we want to talk to them. For instance, we had a cabin over on Little Pine in Ottertail County. And my next-door neighbors were master gardeners, and they had 5,000 different kinds of hostas. When we rented to somebody, you can't have a dog. Because we don't want to make problems with our neighbors, we want to respect our neighbors. And that respect is kind of the, where the whole thing hinges on, is trying to have that. So, I mean, I'd still like to see it, you know, us have the ability to regulate this as cities. The option. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, sorry.
I could add one thing. One of the nice things about a meeting like this is you hear a lot of ideas. And invariably, you're going to hear ideas that you had not thought of until you hear them here. And I would like to say, I really appreciate his concept of having a window where you can choose two months, say, out of the year where this is a rental property. Because it addresses a lot of the issues about buying up properties commercially then, and driving up the price for working families, families entering the housing market. I think, I had not considered that, and I thought that was a very, very perceptive idea, so I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Dave.
Mr. Chair.
Steve Fries, Lakewood Drive, Deerwood Township. And I just want to say that our area, our lake association is concerned about how often these septic systems, whoops, excuse me. These septic systems out in the townships are going to be checked on. I don't think them checked every three years is adequate, I think they should have to be checked a little more often. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Got to put it down. I'm Gary Hanson from Emily, the city of Emily. I've been a council person for 27 years or. I remember when this first came up years ago, the problems we were having and that. I've been fortunate enough to work with Greg and Dave for X number of years. I like what you said about the flexibility. I listen to Fifty Lakes, I listen to Riverton. They're small communities. They don't want what the county has, and that's fine, that's their prerogative, that's their choice. Emily, we're fortunate that we have our own police department, we have our own planning and zoning. And frankly, the people, the majority of the people that do rent in Emily are there year after year. We know who they are, we're very fortunate in that way. If we do have a problem, we address it internally, and it gets corrected. I think the big thing here is the flexibility. If you don't want to go with the state or the county standards, if you want your own ordinance, this is like we have, you should have that choice to go ahead and do that. You mentioned contract with the county. I think that's a fantastic idea, I really do. If you don't want a contract with the county, like we opted out on that, we do our own. If you don't want a contract with the county, like, we opted out on that, we do our own, we're very fortunate that way. But I think the choice is the big thing, and I like the contract idea for the flexibility we govern ourselves. And don't get the idea, Emily, we just rent to anybody, we don't check the places, we go out there and watch, we have eyes there. And we have an understanding police force that will take care of it, we know what's going on. But we're very fortunate in Emily, and I can see small communities not wanting to go with the county, so I can see their point also. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ron Martin, Riverton, council member and also planning and zoning liaison. In Riverton, all our long-term rentals, they're registered with the city, so we know who's got rental property. As far back as at least 1996, we've had an ordinance, no more than four turnovers in a year. That alone should supersede any short-term rental permit. When Crow Wing County called the city, they were told, we allow four a year, they issued a permit anyway. We've had to go to the extreme now, we put a moratorium in place, there's no short-term rental until we can figure this all out. I don't know why, a municipality, we've got, you know, our own city government, we've got planning and zoning, we have ordinances, why the county thinks that even though they've been told, they can kind of do it anyway. That's where, you know, the control going to the cities needs to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner? I, first, I wanted to say thanks to everybody that took the time on a snowy day to come here, and, you know, I know it was, first, when I drove in here, there was a car in a ditch right away, and then somebody came up behind me, and they were, pretty soon they were on my side. So it's, I appreciate everybody coming here. I have not been one that has supported an ordinance like this, but what I will, I'm just, I think the board is looking for some direction to send the staff on what we want to move forward with, and I'll just give you my, where I'm at in listening to all this, is I think we should go to our, take it away from public health, and go to our land use ordinance, and that, that way, I have a total amount of, huge respect for the townships, the cities, and the elected people that are elected by the same people that elect us at the same time. And for us to think that we're lording over you, I know we get kind of pissed off here at the state lording over us, and I don't want to be doing the same thing to you guys, so. So I think we should go to the option, Tim, that you suggested, where we go to our land use ordinance, that way, then the cities can decide what they want to do, then I think we should offer a contract with them. If they want to do it, and if they don't want to do it, that's fine. But I think that, going from somebody that didn't want the ordinance in the first place, I will support that, because of what I've heard here today. Does that make, do you understand exactly where I'm going with that?
That is what I heard. Do any of you have a different direction than that? Because that's what I heard too.
That's the direction that I, that I've heard today, and that's, I think, what's going to work best for all of us, really. And I tried to, at the last meeting, I tried to get rid of the ordinance, but didn't have enough votes, and I'm not going to pout over that, but I think this is the next best option to move forward. And I guess now it's up to the other four to weigh in, and... Well, Commissioner Coring, I'm going to say, hopefully we're taping, because I agree with you. And that's not, not very frequent. But anyway, again, I've heard it from a few smaller communities and whatnot, but that will also give us the flexibility to not issue license where the cities don't want them, and allow the city to manage short-term rentals on their own. So it, I think it is the good option.
Question, you said that we'd have to go with the Crow Wing County ordinance?
Step up to the mic.
I'm sorry. Jody Strupp, again, representing Fifty Lakes. You said that we could go with the Crow Wing County ordinance, would it be just the rental ordinance? Not the entire?
Not the entire thing. No. No.
Mr. Chair.
Good question.
And in deference to Commissioner Coring's heart, I want to just acknowledge that I do support him in this issue. I think you made good points, and I think that is the direction we've heard from the municipalities and the townships. So, and again, I appreciate everything that you folks have brought to the table. It's enlightened me to some of the issues I hadn't thought about, so I appreciate that. And I think that giving you the flexibility is important. So, thank you very much. And Commissioner Coring, if your heart is okay, I hope I didn't shock you too much.
Mr. Chair, if I can. I may be the short timer here, but maybe my legacy will go down in short-term vacation rentals. We know that short-term vacation rentals are not going to be going away. And I do support the second option also. I think that we want flexibility, and we want to be able, as townships and cities, to be able to help manage this, but we, it is going to be an issue that's going to be managed going into the future. And so with that, I would also support the second.
Me too.
And the one thing I think we're, we're still need input on is I've heard septics from a couple folks, you know, there are some maybe internal tweaks we can do to this ordinance, once we do shift it, if that's the direction. So septics being one of those, I've kind of spoke against, I believe today it's four per bedroom in rural areas, to reduce that to two or three. And I think we've talked about quiet time, you know, maybe pulling back on that a little bit. So there's still that portion of this that we, we're looking for that input as well on the internal changes, once we go forward with option two, I believe. So...
Mr. Chair, we also know we need to do some better coordination between calls that are made to the sheriff's office, and how that makes its way over to the short-term rental folks, to make sure that we're logging all of the complaints appropriately. We know that. The process here is, we have to go about a, we have to provide a notice of intent to repeal our public health ordinance. That will probably send a number of folks off the deep end, and so any help that you guys can give us in helping them to understand what we're trying to accomplish, we would appreciate. Then there's a notice of intent to modify our zoning ordinance, and it's take this and put it here. We'd always go out for a 30-day public comment period on those ordinance changes. And so I would ask that you guys start thinking about, what zoning ordinance changes do you think we should make? There were a number of them that were suggested today, but I think that's a broader conversation about what's wrong with the existing ordinance, and how can we make that existing ordinance better? I heard a number of suggestions today, and we're going to mull those, but I would ask that you really focus in on, for those of you especially, where you know it's going to apply. Give us some ideas about how you think we should modify it. We haven't really had that as the focus of this conversation today, so I want to make sure that we engage all of the great thinkers here to help us to figure that out. And I think we get concerned about enforcement, that we can actually enforce a provision. We don't like the idea of saying that something is against the law, and then never doing anything about it. And so we want an ordinance that we think we can reasonably enforce, too. So those are the considerations that tend to go around our head. Did I miss any? I don't think so. Good. We really appreciate you guys coming, and I don't know if you guys, I don't know if they know how much influence you guys hold over the group here. We invited you here today genuinely because we wanted to know what you think, because the fellow elected folks in this county, that means a great deal to these guys. And so if you don't know that you have influence, oh, boy, do you. Just because we haven't invited you to all come together, doesn't mean we don't want to hear from you. We want to hear from you. We prefer official action. Official action will always carry more weight with us than the individual opinion of one board member. So if you really want to influence us on something, take it up formally, pass a resolution, it will carry more weight. I just know that that's the history. So, really, this is so cool that we get to come and see you guys today, or you guys came to see us today. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. And Mr. Chair, we'll get on to business of trying to change the zoning ordinance, there will be a comment period, we will be looking to make modifications. So send it to me if you've got something sooner, otherwise there is a formal process that we'll go through.
And then just one more question, Mr. Chair. So are, we're on a calendar year, so will we be able to get this accomplished? Because people, Gary will send out the notices that people need to get their license, and so do you think we'll have this all ironed out by then?
It's the right time of year. I don't know that we're going to be able to hit the first of the year, but there is no real magic to the first of the year. We will administer according to what we know is coming. And so if the board is going to repeal, we will delay sending out renewal notices to anybody whose area we don't have jurisdiction over under the new regulatory scheme. And so if you guys are also, if you're interested in contracting with us, send me an email, we're interested in that as well. But we'll need to do some formal correspondence with all cities and townships, too, because they're not all here, right?
So, so just one more question. I sound like Lieutenant Philambo. But, Tim, I guess if I was sitting out there, I'd go, okay, a contract with the county, what do you anticipate that would look like? Because I'm, I think that if I was sitting out there, I'd be concerned, geez, how much is this going to cost our township, or how much is this going to cost our, our city? What do you, do you have any idea of what you envision there? I don't, I wouldn't think it'd be very much.
I believe our fee structure covers our costs. Is that true? Or close? How close? What percent? I think that's the answer to your question. We should try to cover our costs largely, that can be done within the scope of the fees that are charged. There may be some additional modest charge. The devil is always going to be in the details on that, so I think it's a fair question. But trying to keep it as simple as we can.
Okay, that didn't make any sense to me. So 75%? So then we'd be asking the city to pay, what would the city be responsible for?
It's going to vary from city to city, and the more activity there is, the more the fees will generate to help offset our costs of doing so.
But it'll just be per unit? I mean, we, it will, okay, all right, I understand.
And what I would suggest is, you can change the fee structure in any way so that it's break even. And the fee structure is set, while we will suggest what the fee structure is, if we're doing it on your behalf, you will set the fee for the permit. And so you can use the permit fee to offset it. Yes.
We wouldn't be able to offset the cities. It would have to be an all-or-nothing arrangement. It would be too difficult. We'd figure out who's where, so I would anticipate we probably need to have the same fee, because if they're contracting with us, we would be exacting the money.
We're going to have to work out those details. I'm not sure if we do. We didn't in Crosslake, we didn't accept the fees in Crosslake. We just worked it out. Anyway, there are a variety of ways to slice and dice that, it's just money, and so how the money flows, we'll have to figure out. But I think generally speaking, the fees should cover most of the cost.
Yes.
The fees that people pay, the individual rental owner pays should cover most of the cost.
I think you hit on, when you said most of the cost, because if you look at our charges that we have for permits and everything else, those permit, those permit fees don't necessarily cover all the costs. And you might say, well, why are we not covering all the costs? Because you've told me it's for the greater good of the county to have these permits.
This is how I think about fees. If you can identify the person who is the beneficiary of the service, and they have an ability to pay, it's a good candidate for a fee. Even after calculating a fee, you can still have the conversation about, okay, this service that we're providing, how much of it has a benefit to the individual, and how much of it has a benefit to society at large? And so you make a strategic decision, not accidental, in each case of setting fees, we analyze them. And then we engage these guys in a conversation about, what's the percent that we should charge everyone, and what's the percent we should charge the individual permit person who's applying? And that's the conversation we have. It's not about generating fees for the sake of revenue, you know we can do that through ad valorem taxes, and frankly, it's easier to do it through ad valorem taxes. We charge fees because we can identify who benefited from the service, and they have an ability to pay. And then we debate, is there a generalized benefit to that? We think there's a generalized benefit to society of having orderly development. And so we charge all of us for a portion of our planning and zoning. But we charge about 75% of it to the individual permit puller, for lack of a better term. So it's not accidental, it's very, it's a conscious analysis of who's benefiting and how much general benefit there is. And we do that for every one of our fees. Not every year, about every five years we analyze it.
I have a quick question. Are those licensing for the short-term rental, is that yearly, January 1st to December 31st?
What year, is it now? January 1st to January 1st?
Yes.
Or December 31st? And the first year that we do it, let's say we don't adopt the ordinance till February 1st, we might need to that year be February 1st to December 31st.
Okay. A question that I had was, like in our community, you know, we've got the moratorium now, it's none, so is that, they're just going to get a permit anyway, under what it sits now?
You have to understand, we're drawing from different authorities, and so...
But I'm going to be asked this question.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I know it's confusing to folks, I get it. I get it. And why would you, why would the county issue a permit if the city has said there's a moratorium? And it's because we're drawing from different authorities, and the reality is, it is about who's going to get sued. And so we can't enforce authority that isn't ours to enforce. It's your moratorium, you have to enforce that. We can only enforce that which is our authority. And our authority is limited to what's in that ordinance. And if it's not limited in that ordinance, it's not limited for us anywhere. And that really was the crux of the issue that got this thing started, was folks wanted to have us administer it through the city, but imagine how many cities there are, and all of you would want it slightly differently, and we just can't manage that. We're pretty good at one-size-fits-all, but we're not great at variation across all of the cities. And so it's recognizing what you're good at, what you're going to make a mistake at. And I think if we tried to do that, one, I think it's legally troublesome, because we can't enforce your authority, or we get sued. You've got to enforce your authority, we've got to enforce ours, we have to have a regulatory scheme that fits like this if you both want to regulate it. And that's what we're trying to do. Good questions.
Anything else before we wrap up here? Gary?
We've got other things, other short-term rental we want to talk about.
We really appreciate you guys coming, unless there's anybody else.
You don't have to leave, though. You can stay and listen to the rest of the, what we're going to talk about.
All day, the artwork in the building is great, this is your house, take a tour.
Great. Thank you. More to come. And Mr. Chasky, thanks for being polite today, and not giving us a tongue-lashing. I appreciate it. Think he gets it? I think he gets it now.
He's a little calmer today.
He can make it, sometimes in a really big truck, but he can always make it. He can, he doesn't, you know, the guy who manages the snowplows never can say, I couldn't make it.
make it.
They're talking about you, Tim.
Mute, mute, mute. Mute, mute.
Okay, we're up and running. Jake?
Or Stephanie, or?
Well, I think, I, I don't know if, Stephanie, you had anything you wanted to chat about short-term rental-wise? Then I will, when we're done with that, I'll shift over into some other things, so I didn't-
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
I, I think just having a general direction since, you know, where we want to move, Jake and Gary and I have had some preliminary discussions with respect to moving it to the land use ordinance. Our recommendation is to not amend the land use ordinance, but to create a straight short-term rental ordinance that is separate from the land use ordinance. I think this is going to make it much cleaner if we're having cities opt in, because then it will be selected for that specific ordinance only.
Sense. They have to adopt that exact language. So separating it, that makes good sense.
Uh-
Still borrowing the same authority.
Correct. It would still, the, the authority would, would remain the same, and essentially, we can mirror what we currently have, we just have to change some of the statutory language. And then, the issues with cities who want to opt in, that, as I indicated at the last board meeting, is murkier legally. We have the ability to do that, but it's not as easy as soil and water, because it will be impacting the sheriff's department, the city police department, also, you know, what the city is going to do in, in adopting our ordinance. So there are, it's-
There's details.
Yeah.
There's some murkier things. Some of it can just be a general definition within the ordinance, but others will probably just be policy decisions.
Yeah, and that makes a lot of sense, because that one lady was concerned is, do I have to accept all of the ordinance?
Yeah.
That makes a lot of sense.
So, so just so I understand, so, okay, so like, our, our land use ordinance is here, and it, it wouldn't be incorporated in there, it would be separate?
Correct.
I understand.
But it would be using the same authority given to us to do land use planning?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's essentially a second zoning ordinance, but-
But we were, we were thinking for the modification, would we add short-term rentals to our land use ordinance potentially, so that they're allowed by our ordinance?
Yeah, there will have to be some things like that, maybe.
Sure.
No?
But we'll have, we'll have our own ordinance for short-term rental.
Cool.
So we have to have a public hearing?
Yeah, thirty-day, we have a thirty-day public comment, so we, we anticipate around February-ish to get this thing up and going, so it won't be the first of the year.
So, so the only way, then, okay, so once this ado, is adopted, cities are automatically, and the townships that do their own planning and zoning are automatically out, unless they opt in?
Correct. And it's going to take us a little bit to make sure we've got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted, to make sure that once we say, okay, we're ready to execute now, publish our notice, but what we can't do is let that stretch into March.
No, and things that, you know-
Do we need to move forthwith?
Things that'll bog it down, if you guys get into who's going to pay what, when, and how, my suggestion is, we already have a mechanism to collect from the owner of the short-term rental. Let's just keep doing that, and not charge a separate something to the city, whatever our fees need to be. We just, we have a fee schedule for the short-term rentals, how much money do we need to collect? And we do it directly with them through the short-term rental software, you know, and just keep it that, to me, it would be clean. Now, I'm just giving that as a suggestion that we can-
Oh, I, I guess I'm, I'm still trying to put this all together, so, so really, when you say contract with us, they're not spending any, really, in essence, they're really not spending any money with us at all. They're, they're, they're opting in, it's an opt-in, but we're collecting the fees from the people that want to do the rental ordinance in, um-
Most sense.
-wherever.
But that would be my suggestion, like-
I think that makes total sense.
You just don't have to go into a municipality that has said, we're good.
Right. But we're not-
But we will run into like Riverton, where they have a maximum number?
No, no, not Riverton. They don't want-
They'll do their own, then, so they won't have us.
They don't want us at all.
Cool, cool, cool.
Or like Greasy.
Ironton doesn't want us at all.
Yeah.
Or doesn't want-
It has to be that we're trying to administer the same thing. That's what it really boils down to for staff. The error rate increases with every variation that you put into those, into their path.
So in essence, the, the cities, if they opt in, or contract, or whatever you want to call it, they're not paying anything, they're just-
Well, you could charge them, I mean, that's your guys' prerogative.
But I don't know that there's any reason to.
My opinion is, we would get the fees from the short-term rentals, and if there's one short-term rental, that's X amount of work, we charge accordingly. If there's a hundred, we get a hundred fees, and of course, we're going to have more work there, we've charged accordingly.
I can just, excuse me, Gary, but there may be an issue with respect to the prosecution on things. I would have to talk to Mr. Ryan about that, since we would be, we have to understand that there are municipalities, if they have a city attorney, and how all those things come about, and whether that is something that we can do without having a dollar amount on. I can't speak for Mr. Ryan, but it's separate from WACA, like I said, because it's, we don't do really any, we haven't done really any enforcements with WACA. So because our office is more involved, that's where things could end up having a fee, but that would have to be Mr. Ryan's discussion, and he's not here.
What did we do in Cross Lake when we administered their zoning ordinance? Did we prosecute, or did the city attorney?
City attorney up there. But it's like, right now, we, if we have a short-term rental in Cross Lake, Stephanie prosecutes-
Right.
Because we've, we've, we've already collected a fee. Whether that fee covers it or not, that's a different, but, you know, that's how we've done it already.
If you want to-
So I don't know why we would want to change that. Yeah.
That's what I would envision, is, it, it is their zoning ordinance, or whatever ordinance, it's their ordinance, as long as it's identical, we could administer the day-to-day operational things for them, but if there is an enforcement action, I don't see the county attorney getting involved, I see the city attorney, because it's their ordinance.
And, and I think that the issue becomes, if you say that they adopt an ordinance, I think we're going to have issues with continuity, and so essentially, they would have to adopt our exact ordinance, not be writing a separate.
Correct.
And with respect to enforcement, and the cities doing that, obviously, that entails, you know, a discussion with how that is, because that's also a continuity of enforcement as well. If they are adopting our ordinance, then how a city attorney may enforce something versus our office enforcing something, or land services policing that, for lack of a better word, I think those are kind of all the nuts and bolts of things that are getting into the weeds and will have to be discussed, because there are multiple agencies involved.
I think we have about a month, about a month to do that. And then by then-
Thank you.
Have to be ready with our notice of intent. It's got to get published by-
And that's what we wanted to talk-
-December fifteenth, and, because otherwise, we're going to be pushing, as it is, thirty-day public comment period, notice of intent to enact, hold the public hearing, we're talking about a forty-five day window just to get that done.
This doesn't need to change the fees.
So, I, I, I know. Don't want to be pushing you guys into March if we can avoid it, so that is incumbent upon us to turn the detail as quickly as we can.
Well, I think we can put something in the ordinance indicating that if they received a public health-
Why would the city have to pay?
...permit or license for next year-
Right.
-that it would be good for this, you know, and put something in there indicating that, so when you have people that are trying to do what they need to do and get a license right away, we probably can put some mechanism in with respect to that. One of the things, I think, is, like Gary talked about, are the fees, because the fees are actually, when you look at them, they're sometimes one night of somebody staying at that short-term rental.
We'll see what you guys agreed to at budget committee that you'll consider in the fee schedule, that'll actually, that seventy-five percent number I gave actually will be covered more with the fee schedule you guys are thinking about adopting.
Fees per bedroom.
That'll actually address some of that.
More bedrooms, higher fee. Remember, we talked about that?
You guys, if you're thinking about going to a per-bedroom.
Do you have any other changes? We have, right now, in the ordinance, we had gone four bedrooms to three.
That's-
We had heard from you guys that you were concerned a little bit about the number of folks in the bedrooms. There's another one, too. What is the second one?
It was the bedrooms.
Want to do anything with quiet hours, quiet times of?
Yeah.
And, yeah, I think the quiet time, I think there had been some discussion about the occupancy and occupancy with people on a septic system versus being on city water and sewer, because there would be a difference. And the issue, obviously, with the quiet hours, is just, if you have a short-term rental here and a regular residence here, how do you police, if we pull them back to something different than what general issues-
So, do you want to have quiet time for a short-term rental when there is not quiet time for any of their neighbors?
So, question, I don't know, I got to think about that, but, so question, Gary, I don't know, or Jake, or Stephanie, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to this, but how many, like, last year or the, this year, how many septic issues did we identify as far as, you know, the, the septic is failing, or there's an issue, or whatever have you? Any idea?
Do you have the number?
I, yeah, I'm looking here. We had one failing compliance inspection, we had twenty-seven that had substandard sizing.
What does that mean, Gary? Substandard, not, not adequate? Do you feel like it's not adequate, or, or what?
Yeah, they're renting for a number of bedrooms, and their septic was sized for, let's say, they put in a three-bedroom septic, and they're renting for five bedrooms, that it's not sized adequately.
But you identified that, you didn't go out and, the sewer's failing or anything?
Correct, correct.
But one?
Well, one that needed an upgrade, twenty-seven that were subsized, I'm assuming Jake's got them, I'm sure we worked with them to get them up, I don't have the, where they're at currently.
Okay.
If, they either had to reduce the number of bedrooms that they were renting, or they would have to upgrade that septic. Those are, that would be the choice that they would have.
Or get a variance. There was the most recent case that I sent you guys, where the drain field was nine square feet short. Nine square feet, three feet by three feet. You can't find a vendor to put something like that in, because now they're touching a system, and you're going to hold them accountable for everything in that system now. They don't want to touch it, so, nine square feet.
So when a, when a system is built, like, let's say I'm just going to, I'm going to build a house, a three-bedroom house, do you, does the county build in, like, a little, I would assume we build in a little leeway, I mean, if it's a three-bedroom house, you don't, you know, you're not sizing it for, for exactly three bedrooms, I mean, I would assume you're sizing it for a washer and a, and a, you know, dishwasher, and on and on and on, right? Correct?
Commissioner Corrigan, it's a great question.
Of course.
And, hi.
Your first today. Steve had a lot of those.
It's, it's always a chance to, to educate, too. I think, so, in Corwin County, we do have more restrictive rules than the state minimum, so we require what's called class-one sizing, which means any se, new septic system for residential dwelling needs to be sized as if they're going to have a dishwasher and things like that, to accommodate a slightly larger size capacity. So we, we do have that class-one sizing to accommodate exactly what you're talking about, when it comes to the size of rooms and, and these additional appliances. In regards to, do we make them go, hey, you might want another bedroom, so you should size it a little bit higher? We can't make them do that, but our septic designers in this community, we have great, we have a great community of, of septic professionals, and a lot of them, and they're always trying to work with customers to say, you know, if I were you, I'd do this. But that's not something that we, we'd force them to add one more bedroom capacity. Is that helpful?
And that size-one sizing is based on research that the MPCA did with the University of Minnesota over the long course of time. They didn't pick the average amount of water usage for a family, they went to, I think, the ninetieth quartile. So they were trying very hard to pick a standard for sizing of septic systems that recognizes that there will be overuse of a system occasionally.
Our, our compliance inspection, I know there's been some conversation about, you know, should we check them more, how many years do we do? Our compliance inspection rate has been north of ninety-three percent for quite some time. Of all the compliance inspections, we do, more than ninety-three percent of them are passing, so, I mean-
Which is a good thing for us.
Right.
It's a good thing for us. We're going to have work to do. Any other changes that you wanted to see to the specifics of the policy and the ordinance?
What about the quiet time?
The issue there is, do you want to set a quiet time for a short-term rental that the neighbor does not have?
Currently, currently, that's only on Friday and Saturday nights, I believe, isn't it?
It gets extended.
It's one of the most frequent complaints.
It's, it's-
Ten to seven during the week, and then-
And then twelve to seven-
Midnight to seven.
Fridays and Saturdays.
Friday and Saturday. And originally, I thought going to ten o'clock would be a great idea, but I'm listening to what you're saying, we're not limiting the neighbor who might be having a reunion of some sort and that, so personally, I think we leave that one alone, that would be-
If it is too loud, it is about the property rights, spilling over onto your neighbors, and that should be dealt with as a nuisance.
But that can go either way.
You're going to have to leave that in the discretion of the law enforcement officer, because by the time they get there, there may not be any noise.
Right.
Well, what do we do about the fact that people are always calling me and saying, oh, you don't have a noise ordinance, so we can't do anything? Well, there's a state noise ordinance. Does having two noise ordinances make one better than the other? I mean, I think we have a noise ordinance, I think that's a poor defense.
It's hard to regulate noise.
It goes, it goes to what I, I've said this before, you know, down on South Long Lake, there are fifty-foot lots, so, I mean, if I turn, my shoulder's almost running in, you know, I've got big shoulders, so I'm almost running into my neighbor's lot, but my neighbors next door, I love my neighbors, they're great, they're great, but they're like thirty years old, and on weekends, they have a lot of their college friends there, and at times, it gets kind of loud, but you know what? I love my neighbors, I try to figure it out, you know? They got three dogs, I've figured out how to handle that, I buy dog treats. And so now, when they see me in my yard, they don't go, roo, 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 they go like this, because they know I'm going to give them a treat! And so, you know, it's all about trying to figure out how to work with your neighbor, rather than weaponizing government to go after them and get them, you know? I got to live next to these people, and they're twenty feet away from me, you know, so, I, that's what I think people have to realize, is you got to get, we got to figure out how to work with each other, rather than weaponizing government against your neighbor, you know, because you're mad at them, you know?
Are you suggesting that VRBOs have to have dog treats in the house?
They might have to, I don't know.
Okay.
All right, well, are we-
We have not heard any new changes, and so we will proceed accordingly.
Okay.
Parking, that might have been an issue, that might be an issue, too.
Yeah.
How about one car parked for every bedroom?
Oh, the parking? I mean, that was something that they brought up, where they have no off-street parking, I mean, and that's something, I guess, that you guys can make a decision on, whether that's something, because right now, I think parking is, you just need to make sure that it's, it doesn't-
Not blocking, addressing, yes.
Yeah, it doesn't infringe on right-of-way.
Maybe that's where we should leave it. Let's not block you right of way. We, we focused on emergency response-
We, we focused on emergency response vehicles being able to get even out.
Right, yeah, maybe we just leave it there.
That was the public safety concern, but there is neighborhood concern, so.
Yeah. I'll leave it there.
We're gonna proceed accordingly.
Okay.
We'll bring it back to you as quickly as we can.
Okay.
We just had Jake there running you through some timing of some other events, like, we have this little thing out there, like a moratorium and stuff, we wanted to kind of give you guys an update on.
Okay.
Moving on.
All right. I, I will try to keep this brief. I know we've been up here for a while. I'm not gonna go into too much detail on this, but, Mr. Chair, members of the board, in addition to a short-term rental, you know, issue we're dealing with, we do have our land use ordinance as well. We do like to update that and look at it at least once a year, and we're at that time of year where that typically happens. One of the big items that I wanted to go over is, on April twelfth of 2022, there was a moratorium enacted for an interim ordinance related to alternative access lots and controlled lots and boardwalks. Right now, all of them are temporarily banned in the county, in our jurisdiction. That will expire on April twelfth of 2023. So, wanted to update you on the plan we have to try and get through that so that we can, when that goes away, we have a good study and potential ordinance revisions. So, we've, we've hired Ben Olson with Hometown Planning. He is the same consultant who did the, if you recall, the airport study that we had as part of the previous moratorium and some plating moratoriums that we had. So, he's looking at other counties and what they are doing with alternative access lots and boardwalks, and also looking at any state guidance rules that are out there. He will, he's drafting that study to take a look at what's going on, and then working with staff to provide some recommendations based on what we found for potential revisions, if any, to the land use ordinance to better address the concerns we heard from the board and from the public and from our own research on what other counties are doing. The plan would be to take that study and recommendations, if we can, I'll have to talk with Tim Hull about this as well, at, at talking at a committee of the whole in December, and have that study in front of you beforehand so you can look at it and kind of provide really good feedback on what do you think as a result of this study we need to do with alternative access lots. Then, assuming that goes okay and we get some good feedback there, we would then take that out for a thirty-day public comment, as well as a number of other potential ordinance revisions, more minor in nature, that we would, we would have. And we would run that in January, and then in February, we would go to the Planning Commission to get their recommendation, and then in March, go to the County Board to get a final decision on the land use ordinance revisions. So, the nice thing about this separate process is it's not bogging down a separate short-term rental ordinance, which I'm hearing we want to get done before March. So, the, the timing on this one is a little bit more simple because I want to make sure you have the study in front of you to look at. I don't have any specifics to go through as far as, here's what we're finding already. I want to save that until we've really got the nuts and bolts of that and really have a good discussion in December. With that, I'll stop there for now on at least the study and the timeline stuff and see if there's any feedback from the board on, do you agree with the, sort of, the timing of that?
I agree with it.
Okay. Seeing heads nod, I will continue to proceed in that direction. One item that we did have for initial discussion today that I'll just briefly introduce is one of our other ordinance revisions we want to look at, and then we can even have further discussion in December, is we, we have seen and heard a number of what we'll call pseudo-commercial use in residential areas. And so, what, what we're getting at is we're seeing some properties that are in residential areas, zoned residential, not commercial, that have either houses or sheds that have contractors or employees going in and out, perhaps storing their vehicles on those residential areas. And we've been interpreting our ordinance, along with our legal counsel's advice, in a specific way, and I'll backtrack to say, the reason it's causing an issue is, I want to get feedback from the County Board on how we want to handle these more commercial-type uses in residential areas where it's not an overt business where they're selling retail things. So, right now, our ordinance has a couple of different provisions that handle things. We have something called a home occupation. A home occupation is where you own the property, you live there as your primary residence, and you just want to, for example, sell guns in your basement. You can do that so long as you don't have employees and you don't have the thing stored outside. There's no conditional use permit required, it's just allowed. So, that's a, a very minor, on the, on the scale of business, something we would call a home occupation. It's just allowed, no permit required. A step up from that would be what's called a home business. A home business is where, even in a non-commercial zoned property, you conduct a business where the step up is either the things are displayed outside or work is being conducted outside and you have employees, and/or you have employees, and that ratchets it up a knot where we would allow that, but only if the Planning Commission allows it with a conditional use permit. You still have to be the primary owner and live on the property on that notch up. So, note the difference, we're talking about isn't Dollar General, where you don't even live there. You still live there, but now you've got employees, you've got things going on outside. The other thing we have is a commercial storage yard, which our ordinance defines as, without reading it specifically, basically, you're holding other people's items. For example, shrink-wrapping pontoon boats and saying, "Hey, come store them on my property outside." A transaction occurs, and then you have things stored on the property, or cargo containers for other people. Those are just some examples of some storage areas. We also have a definition of a non-commercial storage yard, whereas if you're a, if you're the owner of a property and you have a lot of things you can store, as long as they're your items, we wouldn't consider that a commercial storage yard, and you, you would be allowed to do it. What we're finding is when you have someone that owns a residential property, but they don't live on the property, and they're having employees store things on that property, and exiting, going in and out of the property at different hours of the day, that's causing some concern by area residents, and where we've slotted that is a type of business. Yeah, well.
One.
Right.
One concern.
Thank you. And, and we are, we are seeing, though, other than that, some of these types of activities occur beyond this one example. And so, what we've had to do right now until we get, I would say, some better direction or some clarity by the board on how you want to handle that, is we've, we've, we've been aware of it and kind of allowed that to continue to occur until we get some better direction on what's going, what we're gonna be doing moving forward. So, that's where we're in a spot where we've handled that as an actual business because there's employees going in and out. And so, the remedy for that is get a zoning change, which would be a spot zone in a residential area, a commercial business, and then you could literally put a Dollar General there if you wanted to. I'm not sure that's the right remedy. Or do we say, there's different options here? Or do we want to see something where we say, "Well, we would allow you to store your own contractor things and have employees go in and out," and not call that a commercial business that needs a conditional use permit? So, it's, it's these really, it's these spectrums of, how much are we gonna say it's either a business or it's just a home that has a, you know, kind of an incidental use? So, you've got the full-blown commercially zoned property, you've got a conditional use permit, or it's just allowed. Right now, on those things where we've had contractors going in and out with employees, we've, we've, kind of by the black and white of the ordinance, been saying that is a business because the owner does not live on that property. And so, I know that was a mouthful, that was a lot, but as we consider crafting some options for that, here's my frame-up question. Do you want to see that more regulated as a conditional use permit with, with approval from our Planning Commission for those types of things? Do you want to see that as more incidental, allowed, and reframe what a home occupation is, or something else?
So, if I can speak, this is, this was prompted by me because I had somebody call me. This guy owns, or he buys properties and then he fixes them up. So, he's got some employees working for him, some carpenters and stuff, and I'm, I'm guessing that this guy owns maybe properties in different areas. So, let's just say hypothetically, he owned a property, a house, maybe he was renting it out, and there was an extra garage there, so he is storing, maybe he has the tools, and his employees will go there and they'll get the tools out of this garage. So, let's say he's working up in Emily, and he happens to have the same thing up there where he's got a garage where he can stage out of, I guess, I don't know what else to call it, but people would get the tools out of there. And let's say he's got a place down by Long Lake, and his crew happens to be working down there, and they're just working, they're getting, maybe they're, they're gonna start a project and they put the two-by-fours in the garage. So, I don't agree that those garages, all, all of a sudden, he's running a business out of there. I, I guess I don't see that. I don't know why it would have to be a commercial entity. I just, I don't, am I explaining that, Gary? Because you and I talked about it. Am I explaining it properly? I, help me with it, but I, I guess I just, I just don't see it. The guy owns the garage, so he can't go there, or his employees can't go there and get stuff out of the garage. Now, all of a sudden, because one person complained because people were going in and out of there, now, all of a sudden, we gotta, we gotta classify that as a commercial operation because he's running a business out of there. And he's not, there's no telephone there. He's not answering a phone there. There's nobody sitting at a desk there. He's just storing some stuff in there. I don't know. Tim, help me out.
Sure, sure. I, I think you're pretty close to what the issue is. You know, you have a residential neighborhood, a house and a garage. The owner does not reside in the house, rinsed the house out, but he's kept the use of the garage, and he uses that for storage of building materials when he's flipping homes. So, while there might only have been one complaint on this one, the history on how we've navigated the use of those types of buildings has been, we have looked at them as a business if they have employees coming and going. You know, I guess if you're a plumber and you're the only plumber and you got some copper pipes and, you know, wiring, that kind of stuff, electricians and stuff, we, you know, maybe haven't said they're all businesses if it's themselves, but when you have multiple different trucks and people coming and going, that's where we've kind of asked for legal opinions, that kind of we've asked, and that's kind of where we tried to draw the line on some of that decision-making on that. However, maybe that line needs to be moved, and that's kind of where we, you know, we've had some concern from the boards, we're just looking at for where the majority is on how you'd like to see that. It's, I mean, there's pros and cons. There, it's not a, no pun here, no, it's not a black and white issue on this one, but.
So, let me, Mr. Chair, if I could just ask a quick question. So, you're talking about employees. So, we're getting into verbiage here, or is it anyone? So, for instance, if this person owns that garage and stores some supplies in there, but a subcontractor comes and gets those supplies out of there, do we look at that differently than if it's an employee?
It's a good point, Commissioner. Where we were at is everybody, you know, a lot of people have garages and sheds. Hard for us to know, if, if they're the only ones there, what they're doing in their shed, we try to, you know, you know, we're, we're, we're good with that. It's when we're notified that, all of a sudden, it's not just the owner using his garage or her garage anymore, it's, it's numerous people coming and going, and that's where we've started to take a deeper look at those, and those we have decided in the past, so far anyways, that that would be a commercial subcontractor. I don't know.
So, my next question then is a timeline. If it's utilized for, say, sixty days or ninety days, I don't know what it would take to redo a home, but versus where it's ongoing, where this just continues year after year after year, are we looking at that?
And, and that's where, my understanding on this one, this isn't the stuff for this home. This is gonna be an ongoing, a place where he's gonna store his materials when he's in that area flipping homes, is my understanding.
Cats, we understand it, too.
Yeah, and just Chairman Barrows, or, sorry.
I'm not chairing.
You're not chair.
Chair Barrows!
It's been a long morning. This is about, because I've actually been and have heard a complaint. It's, you know, it's a residential, they may not even have people living there, and there are vehicles being stored there, the tools, they're essentially basing the business almost there, even though the phone calls may go somewhere else because they have a cellphone. And so, it's, they, you know, whether it's a painting business or whether they use that essentially as a storage area, and then they're going to and from that storage area multiple times, and it may be all the time throughout the year. We're not talking about short time where they're remodeling their home or they're building the home right there. That wouldn't be covered by this.
Mr. Chair, so, Commissioner Corrigan said they're storing supplies there, and you're adding vehicles now to it.
Trails.
So, we're, we're expanding what's happening on that, around that garage. And, and I, I have a difficult time with that. You know, if I'm putting two-by-fours in there, that's one thing, but when I'm storing vehicles there and other equipment, then I start looking at more of a commercial venture there. And like you said, they're not always renting, so the residents could be vacant, and that, that could be true in any rental situation, so I'm not quite as concerned about that. But what I'm seeing is that this gets expanded, and if we don't address it, it just gets bigger and bigger, and I'm, and I'm not poking at this one person. I mean, this could happen with anyone. We saw with Land Works out here on Seventy-Seven, that it started as something a little smaller, and it got expanded, and we had to address that issue. And we did with our zoning in that area, but that's what I'm looking at, is that I think that there, we have to draw a line somewhere to protect the residents.
So, can I give you another hypothetical just to see what you guys think? Okay, so, let's say, let's say I'm, I'm a plumber. This is my house. I live here. Let's say I live, I don't know where, I live in unorganized territory, and I have a, a big garage here, but this is my residence. And let's say I have, my plumbing business is in Brainerd, and I have five plumbers working for me, and vans are kept there, but I might not have room for all my plumbing supplies, so I keep some of my plumbing supplies here at my residence, so my, these workers of mine might come over here and, and get some stuff out of my shed. So, then, all of a sudden, Gary's telling me that, "Oh, my God, you're running a business out of there. Now, I've gotta change the zoning, or I gotta, or I gotta get a conditional use permit or something for, for this place." I, I, it just doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, I just feel like we're, you know, I, I think we always tried, I think this board has always been kind of reasonable, but I think we're just getting kind of crazy when we're, now we're gonna run after garages and say whether or not that might need a conditional use permit. I, I don't know, I just think it's just kind of, it's an old reach.
Mr. Chair, if I, I might, I don't look at us as going after any particular person. We're looking at our land use ordinance, and we're saying, these are residential properties, they're not commercial properties. And where the encroachment comes is where we're kind of saying that we're stretching the idea of what a residential piece of property is, I guess is where I'm going.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chair and members of the board, really, we want to be respectful of the policy direction that you guys, or everyone has, and so, really, we look at it as, I'm gonna put it in three buckets. Do you want to see it where we say, "That's a full-blown commercial business and the zoning needs to change to commercial"? Do you want to see it where if there's employees going, I'll just use the example of employees going in and out for that type of use on a property that they don't own? Do you want to see that as a conditional use permit where we'd allow it for that specific, if the Planning Commission approves it, for that specific use, and so it would be allowed in certain instances? Or do you want to see it as just under that narrow spectrum of use, just allowed, and make it maybe clearer in the ordinance? So, that, there's kind of like the three lanes, and I've certainly heard, you know, Mr. Corrigan's, you know?
I just feel like we're, we're, we're blowing this up into a bigger problem, like, like sometimes, I think, happens here. We're blowing it up into a bigger problem than it really is. I mean, one person has complained about this. I mean, I, I don't know why, it wouldn't be just a...
And I don't think one complaint.
And I don't think one complaint should change our whole ordinance.
No.
And, and so the way our ordinance is now, at least we've had the interpretation from legal counsel is that is a business, then it would not be allowed to continue. Now, for that specific property at this point, that's, we haven't said no, it's in a holding pattern because we wanted to get direction from the board. So if, if there is a problem with our current way we've been doing that kind of thing, we want to make sure we get that fixed.
So Tim, I don't like to always ask you, but you've got, because I don't want anybody to think that I'm going by your, what you tell me, but I, I like your input because you've been doing this for almost thirty years. So how do you, what's your reading on this? Do you see where we're...
Land use planning is all about property rights. It is about the competition between and among everyone's property rights. I have the right to the quiet enjoyment of my property. Neighbor has the right to the quiet enjoyment of theirs. Neighbor has the right to do a lot of things with their property, but the land use authority of the county limits them from doing whatever they want with the piece of property. We place limits. That's what we're doing. Why would you do that? It is about the conflicts that cross over property lines. The whole thing is about the conflicts that cross over property lines. I would focus here on what is the nature of the complaint? How has the neighborhood been impacted? We have cars that are coming and going at hours that are different than others, correct? We have a volume of them coming to one location that is greater than what the neighbors experience at their house, correct? What is the remaining nature of this complaint?
I just, I can answer that with a, here's, here's the issue. It isn't this one complaint that Commissioner Corrigan keeps bringing up. We have fifteen to twenty of these that we handled the same way over the last three years and now it's this one that we want handled differently.
What do we hear about how those uses conflict with residential uses? If we have fourteen other examples, do we hear any conflicts?
Now, once they get a conditional use permit and there's conditions on when you can come and go, how much stuff you can, you know, put in there, not put in there.
So in my mind, this is where it rises and falls. It's about the conflicts between the uses. And is the conflicts between the uses a reasonable balance of competing property rights? That's what you gotta decide. Is this too much for a neighborhood to have to put up with?
So on those fourteen, or fifteen, or whatever it was, did everybody come and get a conditional use permit then?
The ones that lived there ended up with home occupation or a home business. There were some that needed conditional use permits.
And they did, did they decide to get a conditional use permit or did they just say, ah, forget it, I'm not gonna do it anymore?
Go ahead, Jake.
Some were told, you can't do this anymore. And it's gone. And they've had to leave and have lost business because that's what the ordinance says and it's...
Yeah, so there was a, there was a painting one, I recall, in first assessment where, again, employees coming out to get painting supplies, washing their stuff outside, storing vehicles, that kind of stuff, same kind of use. We had to tell the owner, you can do this, but the line again was the employees coming and going. And so that was sort of like the, where, I couldn't even offer a CUP, a conditional use permit because the, the owner didn't live on the property. It was either change it to a commercial zoning, which would have been extremely spot-zoned, or stop it. So that's why I'm coming here to say, is there something in between? Do you want to see a conditional use permit as an option there? Do you want, you know, that's sort of these tools in the tool chest that we have available.
If they can't, if you say no conditional use permit, then it has to be a zoning change, which is kind of a dramatic deal, isn't it?
That is not the right solution.
I don't think so. And that's why we wanted to bring that, because that, that, that could allow, like I said, a Dollar General in a residential neighborhood someday, or a Walmart.
Don't do zoning if you're gonna do it spot.
Right. And so really what you're left with is conditional use permit or make it clear in the ordinance that we're just gonna allow that on that narrow band of the kind of storage with employees thing. And I just want to make sure we're getting that right. So, anyway, we can talk more about that in December as well.
Think of the helicopter. Helicopters coming down, whoosh, 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 noise, air, right? It's spilling over onto the neighbor. That is always the issue here, is what is spilling over onto the neighbor? Is this reasonable that people need to accept it? I have neighbors, you have neighbors, they have dogs and you've chosen to accept that.
I have to.
You, well, you probably can bring a civil cause of action if that dog is over on your property all the time, but there are remedies, but you try to get along. My point is, you've determined that that's a reasonable thing you should live with, right? And that's really what this is supposed to be about, is what is a reasonable amount of compromise that someone should be expected to live with in the area that that is located and how it's zoned.
I think the thing for me is, is everybody has different parameters of what they're willing to live with. We have to treat everybody the same. If we have an ordinance, we need to either enforce it or not enforce it. And if we're not going to enforce it, we need to get rid of it. But if someone is being unreasonable, three people are going in and out, whereas three hundred, I mean, you've gotta have some, some parameter of what, of what is reasonable.
I think if it was three hundred people, we'd all be saying, oh my goodness, right?
Well, that was an exaggeration, but I mean...
It's a good exaggeration. It's, if that was the case, there's, this would be easy, right? It's not easy because you're right on the borderline of what you should reasonably expect someone to put up with.
What's the complaint?
For our people.
Too many people, too noisy, too much stuff hanging around?
Too much, too many vehicles going in and out of there in the garage and just, just somebody, it's, it's, it's kind of like a, I don't know if it's a private road, but it's, the person has an easement to go down this road, but the person that complained is mad that they're using this road. So it's really kind of just a, I don't know, I'm just, I don't mind people complaining, go ahead and complain, but my God, people are getting, it's just too many complaints coming. And, and to Gary's credit, Gary put this one on hold because I asked him to and he says, you know what, let's have a discussion at the county board and I'm glad we're having a discussion. And so thank you for that. I, I don't know. I guess I don't know where to go. I just, I just don't, I, I'm one that, that I just think that we're just, I just don't want us to put the squeeze on everybody so bad because people, some people, it's kind of like Rosemary said, some people, they can't take anything, you know, and they just, they're, they're calling and do something about it. Sometimes we have to tell people that, you know what, you just gotta live with it. You know, we, we seem like we run after this, we seem like we're a reactionary unit of government. We react to everything rather than, you know, and it just, I don't know, it just seems crazy at times.
I, I do take it this is in the unorganized territory.
The what?
Unorganized territory.
I believe it is, yes.
Okay. So as the county board for, or township board for the, we almost should make a site visit to see what the hell we're talking about.
Well, and I, I think, Commissioner Corrigan, I, I respect what you're talking about, but this is, the ordinance says acts.
No, I know the ordinance says that, the ordinance right now says that it's not allowed.
Correct.
And that's why I asked Gary, I said, can we have a discussion about it and see? So if we don't do anything, they'll just call this guy up and say, hey, you can't, you can't do it anymore or you're gonna have to get a conditional use permit and he probably won't even be granted that because he doesn't live there, you know? So I don't, I don't know, it just, it's complaint-based.
I would say, based on the conversation I'm hearing, I heard we should take a site visit. Actually, that speaks to, planning commission does site visits, right? Uses are different, they're not all the same vehicles. That speaks a little bit more to that conditional use thing. I'm not gonna speak for you, but it helps me understand a little bit about, there's just a lot of different scenarios on these. And as I think about, what am I gonna do when I come in December for our committee of the whole? Do I go down the route of crafting something that would allow something like this as a conditional use permit versus just allow it? And that's kind of the direction I'm looking for, is to, do I start the draft with conditional use or something else?
We could bring you a draft back of how to loosen that restriction. You don't have to adopt it, but you could consider it then.
Does everybody understand kind of what, what's happening here, kind of?
Yeah.
I don't know, what do you think, Gary?
There's so many variables that we don't know, that it's hard to tell you what to do. I mean, how many times are the people going in and out? I mean, would it be any different than a family who's got a whole bunch of kids who are all driving? I mean, how, how much is, how much is too much? We don't have those statistics to, to talk about.
Well, Commissioner Franz, I think, you know, Jake talked about the fact that, you know, loosening and restrictions and a conditional use permit, because right now, if you don't live there and you're conducting business, it's not allowed by the ordinance. That's, that's, you know...
Well, and another question, are these people coming in the morning, at night, or is it an all-day thing? I mean, there's, there's...
Every situation is so different. That's, that's why sometimes the conditional use permit gets at that and it says, well, here's what we're gonna do for conditions.
This is also why it is relevant for you to take into account what the neighbors think, because you are trying to balance competing property rights. It is also why it can't be the only thing you take into account. And there are lots of times when people want you to just simply do a head count. How many are in favor? How many are opposed? You can't do that because you are dealing with someone's property rights here and we hold that in very high esteem. What I would suggest here is have Drake bring you back some language that would soften that and then you can consider it.
What, yeah. What if I owned that garage and just, and I was running a plumbing business, don't live there, but I was going in there to get supplies out of there? Would that not be allowed?
And that was, you owned it, right?
And it's just me going in.
Is that your primary residence?
No.
So we, yeah, that's where we, we run into the issue, but if it's...
Then do a business, you don't live there.
And, and that's why I, I think it's good that I will come back with some language to start with in December and we'll get at some of the concerns and a little bit of the feedback we heard and see if we can move the needle on this one.
Could I hear from Gary if Gary's got any thoughts? I mean, you're the, any thoughts? If you don't, that's fine.
I was just, you know, thanks for asking, Commissioner. You know, I live on, I got a house and garage and if my neighbor started doing a business, that's not what I bought my property for. You know, I bought to be next to neighbors that are, you know, basically the acceptable things that you're gonna do when you go home at night from your regular place of work. Not going to, you know, if I wanted to have a business next to me, maybe buy a, a house up on three seventy-one where it's business, business, couple little houses left, you know? That's not what I would prefer. So I would just say that I think most people would expect reasonable residential use by their neighbor. When they, there's a lot of self-employed folks and, and when you live there, there's different expectations when you live there versus when you're not living there and having employees coming and going. I know that if employees, you know, you gotta get a house done by Friday and they start their work at five in the morning, I'm trying to get my last hour of sleep and I got people banging two-by-fours and stuff, you know, thirty feet from my bedroom. I don't know that I would be that happy, but, you know, I'm, I'm kind of a picky person. But my thoughts are, my thoughts are those conditional use permits have been a very good tool for the planning commission to help the owner really clarify the do's and don'ts if we're expanding the use of the property.
Well, then maybe we don't need to even do anything, we just keep going the way we're going, I guess is, I don't know.
Right now, we would have to tell the gentleman, they can't do it no more.
Yeah, I know.
But now it rises and falls on whether or not they live there as a threshold question. And then the secondary question is, do they have employees or not? And if the answer to, the first one is no, they're not living there and yes, they have employees, you're disallowing it.
It's a business.
Change the answer to those questions and you may get it allowed. You see, we can make the change fairly easily. It's not the mechanics of this change that's hard.
I can see myself standing there, out, out at my garage and Jake is standing there and said, you can't do this. I said, this is my garage.
I would say, I would say it nicer though.
Then I'd say, there's the road. Hi, I'm from Corrigan County, I'm here to help. I don't know, what do you guys want to do? I don't know, what do you think?
I'm certainly willing to listen to the language and then consider it. I'm hesitant to approve, but I will listen.
Okay.
Other thoughts?
Well, one, I'm, I'm concerned that if, if this goes through a conditional use, somebody might be working out of their home, home-based for twenty years and then we're gonna have a commission say no more. I mean, that, that, that just won't fly for me. I understand that we're kind of going against our ordinance today, so maybe an approach to send out to home-based businesses. But, but again, what is the fee gonna do? It's not gonna change anything, it's just...
Couple of good points you brought up. First of all, any use that's currently existing, we would not shut down. It would be for request.
Why didn't you say that sooner?
Oh, well, bad assumption by me that, that was sort of, yeah. So, you know, when we make an ordinance change, for example, lot size, we wouldn't send a letter to all the owners of small lots to say, you need to, you gotta get a variance for, so it's, it's, it's sort of as these new uses come in, that it's, it's clear that this is what...
And then the neighbor that's doing it, that, that's allowed to, is gonna complain because the new neighbor can't.
And to clarify what I said, if we didn't, if we weren't aware that a, a use was happening that is unlawful, yes, they would need to be coming in compliance. What I'm talking about is these past ones that were already legal wouldn't change. But yeah, if we, if we got a complaint, then we'd have to handle that. Did you ask about a fee as well?
Well, if, if, if that's, puts us in compliance with the ordinance, and, okay, so I didn't ask, I'm, I'm just trying to...
It's black and white, like Gary said. You can't do it, you can do it, so...
So what about those that Jake just said we would allow?
That would have to be through a conditional use permit if that's what you changed the ordinance to.
They still go through the process. It could be told, no more.
They could?
I don't like that part at all. Because I'm counting in my head the number of these that I know of over in, in, in my area and I don't want to take my shoes off to count more, but there's a lot of them. There's, there's several of these things and I, I just think we're opening up a can of worms, but...
And we can craft, we don't do this a lot, but we can craft alternate sort of, this is what it would look like if we just allow it with nothing, this is what it would look like under a CUP.
And again, I'm willing to listen to what we got, but I just think it's a bigger, if, if we act on it, it's a bigger deal than what we're...
Oh, definitely. See what you got yourself into, John Lubke?
And Mr. Chair and members of the board, there are a couple of other minor changes that, I'm not gonna go through each one here today, but I just want to let you know that I'll be kind of going through those in December as far as some other ordinance revisions. Some of them are due to things that have happened. For example, a hideaway plat that as a result of legal counsel advice, we realize we need to make some changes. And so I, I just want to let you know there'll be other items that I'll go through. I can briefly go through them now, but I know it's been a long meeting and I, I certainly...
We could send them, send them and let them...
Okay, great, yeah.
Tell us if you have questions.
That's what I'd like. I'd like to see a copy too.
I need to see those to make sure that you're...
So when are you bringing some of these back in December?
I was hoping to get on the committee of the whole for December for your feedback on some of those, in addition to the moratorium discussion.
Is that gonna work, Tim?
I think it's gonna work. We pulled off the safe route and so I think we can insert that.
You know, at some point, if we feel like we're getting jammed up, how about an extra, can't we do an... You know, at some point, if we feel like we're getting jammed up, how about an extra, can't we do an extra one?
Yeah, we can do another meeting.
This one could be, maybe it's on, I, I mean, we could, there's a, there's some stuff in there you're probably gonna have some discussion on, but...
Yeah, I think that's...
Part of the problem is you're running into a long time of year, Thanksgiving and Christmas. And then we have the AMC conference in there. That sucks up a Tuesday. Uh, I don't know if we have an available Tuesday in December. One's the night, well, one is the night meeting. We could certainly do one that Tuesday morning.
Oh.
That's cut your deal with land use and end with budget levy.
Well, if you, if you add it to the twentieth, that's gonna be an awful long day, of what you got up there now.
The first Tuesday is available, but that's also AMC. So there will be a couple commissioners, or at least one missing.
I'm not sure if we have a, we may have a quorum.
We would. I have one commissioner that's going, though.
Well, we have, only have two Mondays that we have meetings on. Could you put it on a Monday?
Put it on a Monday. There's no, we don't have to have a committee of the whole meeting on a Tuesday.
Where, where are we worried about a quorum on, when? Are we worried about a quorum? We were hoping to have it on the twentieth.
The question is, should we have another meeting, add another meeting for committee of the whole? Because we are getting some items piled up.
I'm okay with that.
And so...
If need be.
We're close. We're right there. Um, I don't think we have, I think we're pretty well full for November. Well, that was today. December is pretty full. So is January. So if we get more items between, I think, could we do the ones we have? Yeah, they'd probably be long, look where we are today. But if you don't want to go so long, then we should add a meeting.
What time does the meeting in December start? At the night meeting?
Uh, five.
Five, so...
Well, I mean, that is what we said, five, but you can back it up if you want. Like, if you want to start at four, three, or whatever.
We can't do the public hearing on the budget and levy before six.
Right. You have to have it at six, so it's just...
Well, what if we had a couple hours of committee of the whole before the board meeting, on that day, as long as we're here?
Three o'clock. Do that?
That works. I, whatever works, whatever you guys set up, I just...
Huh? We need an extra meeting.
Yeah, I agree. I just...
Okay, so we will work on scheduling that for three o'clock-ish.
By the time we get to the other, I don't care.
On the day of the evening meeting. I don't remember what day that is, December thirteenth.
Of course.
And then Trace and I will figure out how to move stuff around. But now we can spread it out.
Anything else, Gary? Anything else?
No, just these committee of the holes go a lot quicker. Commissioner Corrigan without all the questions, but...
Why does he do that to me? I thought you were on my side.
That's a polite way to say shut up.
We thought he liked you.
Mr. Chair, motion to adjourn.
Coaching really helped.
I'll second that. Return.